Present, Al. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Present, Al. Return.
Most gracious, getting involved that I can back to once. Thank you for being blessed with this. Instead, I have slowed down. Let's see what this is.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We would like to move item three B, the Building Code, Building and Code Staff Appreciation Day Proclamation to item five A, as well as add under ten, item ten D, Strategic Plan Process Update, that will be presented by Deputy Manager Gill.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved. A second. A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Move, we approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next on our introduction and special presentation is the Building and Code Staff Appreciation Day Proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation, Building and Code Staff Appreciation Day. Whereas building and code staff are essential, not only in the industries on which they work, but to society as well as ensuring that buildings and infrastructure are safe for everyday use by residents, businesses, and patrons. And whereas detailed review of building plans and the inspection process involved to achieve compliance, help institute a path forward that helps the project running efficiently, which reduces costs and ensures a safe structure is built in a timely manner. And whereas code staff review, inspect, and enforce safe building practices in a variety of construction and critical infrastructure components, including structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, fire systems, accessibility, and energy, as they apply to housing, commercial buildings, and public works infrastructure. And whereas Building and Code Staff Appreciation Day is intended to remind the public about the critical role our community's code enforcement are largely unknown guardians of public safety. Now therefore, on behalf of the town council, I, Mayor McLeod, hereby proclaim September first, two thousand twenty-three, as Building and Code Staff Appreciation Day, proclaim this twenty-first day of August, two thousand and twenty-three. Our utmost appreciation to our building and code staff. And if you all would come forward and let's get a picture of this. Or Robert.
Thank you.
It's very rare that he doesn't have comments, but it's okay. We got a lengthy agenda this evening, so I appreciate that. But we do appreciate all the good work, all of you do, thank you. All right, up next, first public hearing is two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-six RZ Milam Equipment Rezoning.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Today before you have a conventional zoning roof in front of you, the applicant is requesting to rezone this parcel from Highway Business B three to Industrial Light. It is approximately nine point eight acres and is located here off of US Highway seventy to the south of Clayton in our ETJ. Current zoning shows us as Highway Business B three, with B three to the north and to the west, we have RE. Our future land use map has this included in our employment center, which would include items such as warehousing, research and development, industrial uses that are applicable for this area. A consideration, approval of the rezoning would allow any of the permitted uses in the I one zoning district to be constructed. Town council should consider that for all potential uses prior to rendering a decision. As far as staff recommendations, the planning, the staff, planning staff recommends approval for the post rezoning. Planning board voted unanimously on July twenty-fourth to recommend this rezoning for approval. Town council action, render a decision for this ordinance and accept the statement of reasonableness and consistency provided by the planning board and reference in the staff report. I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, if not, I'll open the public hearing and give the floor to the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bob Hornick. I'm an attorney with the Bro Law Firm in Chapel Hill, and I'm representing the applicant here this evening, the Milam Equipment Rental and the various Milam entities that own and operate the business. I really don't have a very detailed presentation to make to you this evening. The request is to rezone the property, it's about nine point eight acres from the B three and RE districts to the light industrial, the I one district. The property is located adjacent to the Sunbelt Rentals property, right there at the kind of the intersection of Business Fordy and the bypass. It seems like a perfect location from our perspective for, for the equipment rental business. Looking through the table of uses, it seems also to be very consistent with the other types of uses that would be permitted if the property were zoned to the I one district. And we're here to answer questions for the council tonight. I know you have a long agenda, so we're happy to keep it short, but also happy to spend as much time as you all feel is necessary with respect to this application. We know that we'll be back in the future for annexation, and if we get approved here, then we start the site plan process. And I know that my client at least is quite anxious to, to move forward with that if we can. So that's my three minutes worth, and again, if anyone has any questions, we're happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? All right, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve adoption of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight zero one, along with the statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance two thousand twenty-three oh eight oh one and consistency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, under public hearing is two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-four ANX eighty-one seventy-five US seventy Business Annexation.
The next item is a noncontiguous petition for annexation to the Town of Clayton. The property is approximately fifteen point six acres. It is located off of US Highway seventy there, just south of the PCX business there and across from Griffles along US Highway seventy business. We can see here that the future land use also includes this area in the employment center. And the proposed use, which the applicant is here to speak about, they're also coming before you with a rezoning today, will be warehouse and freight. I forgot, I made this one slide to make this brief for you guys as quick as possible. This is with our ETJ, is approximately sixteen acres, and if you have any questions, the applicant is here to answer them, and I'm here to answer them for you as well.
Awesome, any questions for staff? All right, if not, I will open the public hearing and give the floor to the applicant.
Thank you, Bernie Reinstein Development Manager with Wiley Capital, which is now the owner of the site. We closed in July, and I just want to thank the mayor and the council for hearing our petition. Again, I'm, I'm really just here to answer any questions you may have about the project. We feel that the zoning we're seeking gives us the most flexibility to have a successful project, so that's why we're looking for the I two. And, you know, that's really, that's really it. Call, call me back if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? All right, no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their deliberation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sims.
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-three oh eight oh three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh eight oh three. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The last of the public hearings this evening is two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-five RZ eighty-one seventy-five US Highway seventy rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, this rezoning, the applicant is requesting to rezone from R and E, the residential state and the highway business, the B three zoning district, to the I two, the industrial heavy zoning district. As referenced earlier, it is approximately about sixteen acres in size. It currently is a vacant property. We can see here the current zoning has it split along the highway and RE towards the rear there. As you can see, the adjacent zoning around it is already industrial. We have I two to the west, I one to the north, and then across the way with Griffles, we have a combination of the I one and I two as well. To the south, the parcel there is RE residential state and B three as this parcel is, so the applicant, if they were to rezone and then eventually submit plans and were approved, would have to provide the appropriate buffering. Again, this area is in the future land use area of the employment center and is consistent with our future land use plan and map. Considerations, all I two uses would be permitted if you were to approve this today. Staff recommends approval for this, and the planning board also voted unanimously on July twenty-fourth to recommend this rezoning for approval. Next action for council would be to render a decision for this ordinance and to accept the statement of reasonableness and consistency provided by the planning board, the reference in the staff report. I'm available for questions, and again, the applicant is here as well.
Awesome, any questions for staff? All right, no questions for staff, I will open the public hearing and give the floor to the applicant.
Again, I just want to thank you for consideration. If you have any questions about the project, I'm here. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for deliberation. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two and the consistency and reasonableness statement.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh eight oh two and the consistency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, up next on the agenda is a quasi judicial hearing, and for instruction and knowledge, I'm going to turn it over to the attorney to state for everyone in the council chamber this evening, as well as those watching via social media, what a quasi judicial hearing is and the rules and procedures for that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi judicial or an evidentiary proceeding. It is unlike the legislative actions that you typically see, one, one or two of which we've already had tonight. In a quasi judicial or evidentiary process, witnesses are sworn, due process rules acquire, apply like they do in a court of law. The evidence presented must be competent, relevant, material, and substantial. You take that evidence and apply it to the four findings as set forth in the town code to determine whether the application should be granted or not. Of particular interest, some types of topics or subject matters do require expert testimony, and lay witnesses are not competent to give evidence about property valuation or impacts of, on property or traffic, vehicular traffic matters, or drainage, or anything that would require specialized knowledge to testify in a court of law. All the evidence is, I mean, the, the decision is to be based on the evidence presented at this hearing tonight and not on knowledge acquired outside of this proceeding. And when you get to the end of the hearing, I, I would recommend a vote on each of the four findings separately. Thank you.
All right, so I'll now call this quasi judicial hearing to order number two thousand twenty-two dash one eighty-six SUP Ridgecrest Town Homes Special Use Permit.
All right, and let the town clerk swear fix him.
Those of you here to offer testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief, so help you God?
Aye.
Okay, and when you step up to offer testimony, please sign the oath sheet.
All right. Good evening, council. So this is a special use permit to construct one hundred and twenty-eight town home units on approximately thirty point three four acres. The property is located between City Road and North O'Neal Street, accessed on City Road, and will also have access on Ridgecrest Drive and through the, through Starmount Drive, through a new roadway connection there. And the existing use is, is primarily vacant with a couple of single family homes. The proposed subdivision plan is there on the screen. Again, the, this is included for informational purposes, the council is deciding on the special use permit. The subdivision plan has been reviewed by the TRC and will receive approval following the SUP approval. On the screen here, you have the proposed architectural elevations. Primarily, they're, they're proposing to use luxury vinyl on the, on all of the facades. The property is a mixture of downtown, was, I apologize, downtown support, as well as medium density residential and high density residential in our future land use plan. The medium density residential growth density allows for three to five units per acre. High density residential allows for less than ten units per acre, and downtown support allows for a growth density of up to twenty-five units per acre. This proposed development is proposing nine point three three units per acre. And as you can see on the screen there, there's some excerpts from our future land use plan talking about these three areas. You can see on the, on the map here, the current zoning of the property is a mixture of R ten and R eight with a little bit of RE. All of the development is proposed on, in the R ten and R eight areas. Considerations for the town council for special use permits. Again, town council shall make final decisions regarding special use permits. The special use permit shall address specific findings of fact and the burden of producing competent and material evidence showing these findings are met is on the applicant. All findings must be met for a special use permit to be, to be approved. Town council shall consider the recommendations in the staff report and may approve the SUP with the proposed conditions, add or remove conditions with the agreement of the applicant, or deny the application upon finding that one or more of the findings are not met, or may send the application back to the technical review committee for additional consideration. We'll go through the findings of fact here. On the screen, you see the first findings that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. The applicant states that their proposed neighborhood will not materially endanger the public health or safety and will be built in accordance with the Unified Development Code. The property has access to water and sewers located within city limits such that it can be served by existing city utility emergency services. Stormwater runoff will be managed by permanent stormwater facilities and significant road improvements or payment of fee and lieu will be made in connection with needed improvements to city road and other surrounding roads. The development will also pave and bring up to current standards unimproved portions of Ridgecrest Drive and Meadow Brook Drive, improving safety and connectivity for both this development and the surrounding areas. Finding of fact number two, so the applicant meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning and the town code ordinances and other applicable regulations. And the applicant has responded that except as otherwise may be noted, the proposed neighborhood will be developed in conformity and will meet all applicable specifications or requirements of the Unified Development Code. Third finding is that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties around their neighborhood uses. The applicant provided a response that the proposed neighborhood is located adjacent to existing townhomes and near various major municipal amenities, including downtown and the new municipal park. The neighborhood will help meet demand for quality housing for Clayton's growing population and will not be detrimental to the use or development of surrounding properties. In fact, the improvement of various unimproved roads proposed as part of the project may help facilitate the use and development of some of the vacant parcels surrounding the property. The applicant will present expert testimony at this hearing that the proposed townhomes will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. The last finding is that the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of adjacent properties. The applicant responded that the proposed development is consistent with the zoning for the site and will be developed at less than five units per acre, consistent with the property's future land use map designations. The bulk of the property is designated downtown support and high density residential in the future land use map, and the comprehensive plan recommends residential density of up, of ten to twenty-five units per acre on these portions of the property and provides that townhomes are permissible use type. The lower density of this development, required in part by the extensive streams and natural features of the site, ensures that the development is also consistent with the recommended density for areas designated downtown neighborhood. And a small portion of the property is designated downtown neighborhood on the future land use map. Staff, while staff does not make a, make recommendations on special use permits on quasi judicial items, we have recommended a number of conditions if council decides to approve this SUP and, and finding that all the findings are met. The first two conditions are the standard conditions about the approval of the subdivision plan and that the development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the permit. Third condition is that any ground mounted utility and mechanical equipment shall be screened from view of adjacent public rightsway in, in accordance with the screening requirement in the Unified Development Code. Condition four just limits maximum growth density of the site to four point two two dwelling units per acre. Condition five is the dimensional standards for the development. The minimum lot area will be one thousand nine hundred eighty square feet with the minimum lot with the twenty-two feet. Project, on, project overall will have fifty percent impervious surface, or no more than fifty percent impervious surface with setbacks of twenty feet on the front with twenty-five feet between the sidewalk and the garage, five feet interior side, ten feet side street setbacks, and twenty foot rear setback with maximum structure height of thirty-five feet. Condition six is that the development will be a town electric customer. Condition seven is a requirement to receive a DOT driveway permit for access onto city road prior to approval of the construction drawings, and that any turn lanes required by NC DOT driveway permits shall be included in the construction drawings and permitted by NC DOT for installation prior to the first final plat for the development. Condition eight is the requirement for a fee and lieu based on engineer's estimate approved by the town engineering department to be submitted for the required frontage improvements on city road. And condition nine is requiring approximately ten feet of right away dedication along city road. Condition ten is related to the resource conservation areas and that any impacts in these areas be permitted in accordance with the Unified Development Code and that all other areas shall remain undisturbed and shall be on HOA maintained and owned land. Condition eleven is a requirement that the townhome buildings substantially match the elevation shown in the associated site plan with all building facades utilizing vinyl siding with a minimum thickness of point four six or point four eight inches. Condition twelve is requirement that prior to approval of construction drawings, applicant will have to validate adequate capacity in downstream, downstream pump station and force main to accommodate the proposed flow for the project. And if adequate capacity is not available, the applicant will complete any improvements necessary to accommodate the proposed flow. And that, that is the last of the condition. Again, this is a public hearing and the applicant, I believe is here with, with legal counsel as well as other members of the public.
Okay.
Mayor, just to inform the board, I have been contacted by the applicant's attorney. He's running a little late, says he's about five minutes out.
Well, I mean, y'all know what the mayor thinks about that, and I will turn it over to the council to see what your wishes are. Let's roll. All right, so the attorney is going to be late. Is there anyone else here that can speak? Yeah, maybe we can start with some staff questions from council.
Yes, or if there's anyone else for the applicant who can proceed.
Right.
This is the applicant's consulting engineer.
Perfect.
I haven't been sworn in, I apologize. We were waiting for the zoning attorney so I can do that, if you'd like, and I don't know, Alexis, if you want to speak, or Amanda, either one. And I don't know, Alexis, if you want to speak, or Amanda, either one?
As we're waiting on the attorney, I'm happy to answer questions. I was the original applicant for this project, of course, the consultant, the civil consultant, most familiar with it, but we wanted the attorney to kind of take the lead on the presentation.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? So help you God.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. If you'll just sign those sheet.
And I will give you a moment to catch your breath because I have council members who have questions of our staff, so I'm gonna do that next.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, and once again, as the attorney mentioned, Toby's on his way, so hopefully, once he gets here, he'll be able to set up and we'll be able to take the lead and take charge of the presentation.
He better drive quick. So questions for staff?
Hey, Ben, thanks for that presentation. On the staff report, I saw where it mentioned something about a little under 10 units per acre, but the applicant's response was five units. I don't know if there's a miscalculation or what's the difference between those two?
So the future land use plan allows for parts of the property to have up to 10 or even up to 25 units per acre. And by our code, in the R10 and R8 zoning districts, special use permits for townhomes can allow up to 10 units per acre. The applicant is only proposing 4.22 dwelling units per acre.
Okay, I thought I saw somewhere in the staff where it maybe mentioned the nine-point something, something in the presentation. I don't know. Okay.
That may be the maximum that would be permitted.
Could you go to the current zoning designations slide to where you were earlier? Could you just go over the difference between the R10, the RE, and the R8 for people that the audience maybe is not aware?
Sure. So the R10 zoning district allows for single-family residential homes by right and on lots at a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet per lot. The R8 zoning district, again, allows for single-family detached residential lots by right at a density or at a minimum lots of lot size of 8,000 square feet per lot. Both of these zoning districts, though, are permitted, do permit townhomes as a special use in this, or when this was submitted. The code has been changed since that point, but the code that this was submitted under do allow townhomes as a special use in both the R10 and R8 at a density of up to 10 units per acre. The RE portion of the property does not allow townhomes at all, but there are no townhomes proposed for that portion of the property.
Okay, thank you. Can you go to the future land use map now, please? Okay, what's the purple section again, next, I guess, to downtown support or?
Yes, so the reddish, purples, well, the reddish section is downtown support and the purple section, I believe, is downtown neighborhood with the orange as high-density residential and then that light tan color as medium-density residential.
Okay, so there's only a fraction, well, a certain percentage of it is technically designated as high-density residential and there's, the yellow is, you said, the medium-density?
Yes, so a majority of the property is designated to see their downtown support or high-density residential. The downtown support category allows for up to, or less than or equal to 25 units per acre in our future land use plan. And the high-density residential category allows for less than or equal to 10 units per acre in our future land use plan.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
All right.
Any other questions for staff, Mr. Sims?
Thank you for the presentation, Ben. Couple of questions. Under finding of fact number one, dealing with public health and safety, can you enlighten me or screw me on the statement that says significant road improvements to city road? What does that actually mean?
So this applicant, this applicant is required to, by code, provide frontage improvements along city road, which would consist of widening with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And then they are also, by DOT standard, will be required to install turn lanes at their entrance.
Is there a length of that? How long, how far on city road?
It's along their entire frontage, which is relatively significant for this project. And that is why the applicant has proposed, that's one of the reasons applicant has proposed a fee and lieu for those frontage improvements to allow for more of those frontage improvements to be done at one time in the future.
Is there a measurement on that widening, how far that would kind of be?
I do not have that information. Jonathan Jacobs May.
Are you referring to the length along the property frontage or the width of the road? The proposed section in the transportation guidance document that is provided in the land use plan is a three-lane typical section, so there's a center turn lane or a two-way left turn lane in the center, and they would be responsible for half of that, so roughly about 12 feet.
Thank you.
Ms. Archer?
Thank you for joining us this evening, Ben. The proposed entrance off of Ridgecrest appears to be in a steep slope area and possibly the entrance of coming off of city road as well. So do we know if either of those conflicts with our steep slope ordinance?
The way our resource conservation area ordinance is written is if applicants can receive approval from other agencies to impact the resource conservation areas, then they would be allowed to do that. Both of those areas, while there are some steep slopes, there's primarily due to wetlands and streams in that area, the steep slopes are related to those wetlands and streams. And so the way the ordinance has been interpreted is that if they can get the proper permits to impact those wetlands and streams, then therefore those steep slopes, which are directly related to those wetlands and streams, can be impacted as well.
So I did notice on the sheet of the plans that pertains to steep slopes, there's a note that says steep slopes, a steep slopes area shall be exempt for roadway crossing pending approval of NCD-EQ USACE permits. So we don't know for sure that that would even be approved at this point.
Correct. They would have to receive those permits in order to really construct those routes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff would not approve the construction drawings until that approval has been received.
Gotcha. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Ben. We'll turn it over to the applicant, and I believe he will need to be sworn in as well. Is that correct?
If you'll please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
So help you God. If you'll just sign those sheet.
Sure.
Thank you.
And mayor, members of council, first of all, Toby Coleman, Smith Anderson, 150 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, TriPoint. I want to first apologize to each of you. I don't make it a habit, I think I've been enough, in front of y'all enough to, you guys, to know this, I don't make it a habit to be late, run into some issues, I won't bore y'all with it, but I do appreciate y'all's patience and I will do my best not to test your patience as I move forward. That being said, we've had, I'm gonna go through the presentation, we did get contacted by some neighbors, I think some of y'all may know this, in the neighborhood to the east, which is a single-family neighborhood, who had some concerns, and we've tried to address them as best we could. I don't think, I think there may be some neighbors who come up and speak. But that being said, because we do have some neighbors, and this is a special use permit, I don't know if this is gonna be the last townhome special use permit you hear, but it's probably pretty close, given y'all's change. I did want to present some evidence and have some, I have some binders here just to make it easy for everybody. So if it's okay with y'all, I'd like to go ahead and hand those out now, just to allow for the presentation. So mayor and members of council, all of y'all have one. I'm gonna give one to Jim. We do have a couple extra, if anybody on staff needs one, but just let me know. All right. So I wanted to go ahead and introduce TriPoint Homes, that's my client, that's the developer here. They are a nationally, a public, national publicly traded home developer. They do have quite a presence in the triangle, but I believe this is their first project in Clayton. And with me today from TriPoint is Alexis Karimbot. You've seen Javier Harmel, who's with BGE. He is, he was the one that was responsible for a lot of the plans and will be able to answer a lot of technical questions. We also have with us, and I'll introduce them in a bit, traffic engineer as well as an appraiser. A lot of that is to meet the requirements of the special use permit process. And so as you can see, while they haven't done work exactly in Clayton, they have done work throughout the triangle. They've got a couple of projects in Pittsboro, one in Holly Springs, another in North Raleigh, and a couple in Wake Forest. So Ben did a good job of this. I just wanted to do a couple of highlights on the overall of this project. So as was noted, it's four lots totaling about 30 acres. It's located on the north side of downtown. About half of it is in, you know, there's a, you guys have done sort of a, drawn a box around what you guys would call downtown, whether it's core downtown or downtown neighborhood, et cetera. And about the southern half or so of the property is in some sort of downtown designated area. It is because of steep slopes, because of buffers, and frankly, because of how steep slope and buffers interact to make developing the northern 11 or so acres pretty practically infeasible. There's extensive open space, so about 15 acres out of the 30 will remain open space in this project. What that means is, is for 128-unit project, even that out, add that all up, and it's about 4.2 units an acre. The property that is being developed, as Ben noted, is R10 and R8. And both of, in both of those districts, the permitted density under the UDC is, for townhomes, is 10 units per acre. So as you'll see here, this is the overall site plan. And what you'll see is, is that there is a, it's gonna be built in phases. The main phase on the largest sort of, some portion of the assemblage is behind sort of north and west of the Clayton Swim Club. It's about 88 townhome units. And as part of that Phase One, the improvements to Ridgecrest Drive, so Ridgecrest, if you've ever been up to the Clayton Swim Club, it, the paving ends about at the swim club. And so what this project will do is actually pave out the remainder of that existing right-of-way, which goes up until about, I think it's Gordon Street up at the top. And so that will be part of Phase One as well, is sort of that, those improvements. Those will help improve the neighborhood in terms of providing an additional road and sort of create, help create a grid. I'll talk a little bit more about the transportation in a minute. Phase Two is, right there next is the portion in yellow, that is the portion that's adjacent to the Starmont Forest subdivision, which is about a 50-year-old subdivision that sort of has a number of residences that have been built. This property, as I'll talk about, is actually the leftover of that subdivision. So a lot of the subdivision never got built. And then Phase Three is on, is there in purple, and will provide some additional undeveloped road improvements. And so here's an example townhome elevation. It provides some sense of what will be. The reason we call it example townhome elevation is that in discussion with neighbors, we, the neighbors asked us to provide some masonry along the facades. We took, TriPoint took a look at that and wanting to be, wanting to both work with the neighbors and taking their comments about consistency to heart, while we haven't provided, I think the neighbors wanted 70% masonry on all sides. That frankly is not consistent with all the surrounding neighborhoods. So we've proposed, will propose 30% on the front facade. That's pretty consistent with a lot of the other neighborhoods around there. Again, here's the background on sort of why townhomes. This was a question that some of the neighbors in Starmont Forest asked, because obviously they were, I think, we got a lot of concern from them about that, and then I think they've indicated to us they would far prefer to have single-family homes. But, you know, if you look at the history of this site, Gordon Real Estate is a local developer, and they, they owned this property and attempted to develop the area for single-family homes in the late 60s and early 70s. The area around Edgewater Drive was the first portion of Starmont, and date of creation is a little uncertain because there's no plat filed. That portion in yellow that we're actually talking about, that's a large part of our development, was the Starmont Forest extension. Plat was filed back in 1972. Plated roads, plated lots, they became paper lots and paper roads. Nothing's ever been built. And in fact, the property has remained in the Gordon family since then, and they're actually the contract sellers in this project. And so when Tri, when TriPoint came along, they took a look at the, what's happened frankly in the last 20 years in this area and around downtown. And as you all know, you've got the Georgetown development just directly to the east, and you've got the Park Place, I want to say, I may be mangling one of Mr. Smith's developments, but to the west there with both townhome, with a lot of townhomes and higher-density single-family homes. And so the thought process was that to provide something at a cost, they're shooting for a house price of about in the 300s. And so in order to do that, there, that's why they're looking at townhomes. Also, obviously, because of some of the topographical challenges, it creates an issue where you do really sort of need some clustering. And again, the townhomes help with that. And so just to give you a sense of the density there, I don't know if you all can see that on your screen, but that's sort of a map of sort of comparable density. The Starmont Forest neighborhood has about 2.3 units per acre. That's sort of a rough estimate, based on plats, all of which are in that binder there. The Georgetown single-family development is actually the one that has the closest to density, density to what we're proposing. It's about 4.2 units per acre. The Park, Village at Parkview Townhome Development, which is adjacent to this property to the northwest, it's about 9.5 units per acre or so. And then Parkview Phase Four and Six, which is slightly larger townhomes, a little further to the west, it's about five units per acre. So again, we're landing at 4.2 or there about units per acre, so the density is fairly similar. So we wanted to highlight, I'm gonna go ahead and go through some of the criteria. Ben did a good job. I did, through the magic of YouTube, I was able to listen to Ben's presentation while I was hopefully not violating too many traffic laws to get in here, but I, you know, do want to- But I, you know, do want to just highlight a couple of things in, in the staff report. So while the staff report noted that, you know, there's adequate vehicle, vehicular access and utilities for emergency and medical services, and that the proposed townhomes aren't expected to create a public health or safety danger. Wanted to, also wanted to highlight some of the things that Ben mentioned. So as I noted, Meadow Brook Drive and Ridgecrest Drive will be improved as part of this project. Ridgecrest is shown on the plans as an existing road. It's not paved, at least this portion that we would be improving. And so that's that area in blue on that map. The Meadow Brook Drive is platted on paper, but is not a, a road as of yet. It is shown as a, as a future road in the town's transportation plan. It would be built. And then there's a new sort of connection that would run from Ridgecrest Drive over to City Road. And it, as you can see, it's not on the town's transportation map, but it, it mirrors a proposed or planned road just to the south that would achieve the same connection. And what this effectively would do would be to help grid out this area just sort of north of downtown. It will provide, as you can see, a connection to North O'Neal Street and provide sort of a way to traverse from North O'Neal Street, just north of downtown, over to City Road. One of the things we were sensitive to, and we are aware of, is both this council's and the community's concern about North O'Neal Street. And so although this project was not required to do a traffic impact analysis, because, both because of special use permit and because we're aware of, you know, concerns about the roads north of downtown, we did get a, a traffic engineer to take a look at how this development would impact, you know, both the surrounding roads and the major roads. So is Lisa here? Lisa, come up. So I'm gonna have Lisa Lundine come up. She's with Exalt Engineering, and she prepared a, a traffic study, and I'll let her summarize that. And then if I could, I'd like to come back and continue my presentation.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lisa Lundine. I'm with Exalt Engineering. Have about 12 years of experience in traffic and transportation.
If I could stop. I think you need to testify on this party this morning.
I did with the group.
Okay. I apologize.
Okay. And we put together the, the traffic engineering services for this proposed development. And as stated before, this did not meet the thresholds for requiring a TIA, but we did, as part of our analysis, calculate the expected trip generation, the anticipated site traffic assignment, and analyze the traffic conditions of the roadway network surrounding the proposed site. And now, based on our analysis, the roadway capacity for North O'Neal Street is approximately 12,500 vehicles per day, and this development is expected to only account for about 1.5% of that total traffic. And the roadway capacity for City Road is about 10,500 vehicles per day. This development is only expected to account for about 4% of that total capacity of the roadway. Based on our total analysis, we concluded that the existing roadway network does provide the adequate capacity to accommodate the proposed site traffic. It's expected to have minimal impact on the surrounding roadway network. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any more details.
And, and if I could, so her, Lisa's letter, which has also been provided to staff, is in Tab Five of those binders that we handed out. Lisa, I'm holding a copy of a, something titled Technical Memorandum with Exalt Engineering on the letterhead dated August 17th, 2023. Is this the, the proposed Ridgecrest Towns Trip Generation and Distribution Letter that you were mentioning earlier?
Yes.
And is this a true and accurate copy?
Yes.
All right. And then if you could, could you just state your, your qualifications and education as a, as a traffic engineering, as a traffic engineer?
Yep. I have a bachelor's degree from NC State in Civil Engineering with a concentration in Transportation Engineering. And I've been practicing traffic and transportation engineering for 12 years. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina.
How many TIA's have you done in Clayton or Johnston County?
In Clayton and Johnston County, probably five or so, but I've done hundreds throughout North Carolina.
Yeah, I'm looking specifically to my region.
I don't have the specific number on me right now. Probably around five in this area.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a question. So you did say there would be a minimal impact, so there will be an impact, the subdivision? Yes or no?
Um, yes, there'd be a minimal impact.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Sims?
Just a question. You said minimal impact. How many units, and you might not have answered to this, but how many units would be a significant impact?
Typically, the NCDOT threshold is 3,000 vehicles per day, and the Town of Clayton threshold is about 1,000 vehicles per day for requiring a traffic impact analysis. And typically, if a development generates enough trips to trigger that need for a TIA, then it could have, may not be significant, but it could have impacts. And therefore, we would study more of the intersections and roadway network.
Have you ever testified before on a quasi judicial that it was, doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be just, just Johnston County, just anywhere, that there wouldn't be a significant impact, that a particular subdivision or whatever should not be built?
There are certain subdivisions that would have a significant impact, but generally with the traffic impact analysis, we would come up with a list of roadway improvements that are needed with the development in order to mitigate that site traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, just one follow-up question to Counselor Sims' question. Have you ever done a study where you've identified, however you might phrase it, significant mitigation related to traffic generation?
I have, yes.
And is this, is this a project where you would, you would foresee needing that, that sort of mitigation?
Uh, no, I don't foresee any needed mitigation with this project.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Obviously, Lisa's available for further questions. I would at this point tender Ms. Lundine as a traffic engineer, as a traffic engineering expert. I would also ask that her technical memorandum, which is Tab Five, be entered into evidence. One thing I'll note, and you'll see it in her report, this is a, sort of an excerpt from one of her reports, but a lot of the traffic from this development will not go to North O'Neal Street. So it's estimated that about 30% of the traffic would go over to North O'Neal Street. 70%, we either go to City Road, which, as is outlined in this report, is, has significant capacity, or down Ridgecrest Drive, down to downtown.
Can you tell me how that's calculated? Like, how do you know only 30% would be affecting North O'Neal Street?
I'm gonna ask Lisa to come up. She's, she's the best.
I just need clarification from me.
So we come up with a proposed distribution on how we think traffic would go based on the surrounding land uses and the current traffic volumes in the area and just general access and how they would get to retail offices, or retail and offices and other trip generators.
Okay. And are those peak hours a part of your calculation, be it early morning or late afternoon?
Yes, they would be the typical commuter peak hours. It would be like a 7:00 AM and a 5:00 PM when most folks are going to and from work.
Is it possible for, even though you, I guess you have an algorithm where you calculate this stuff, that it could be deviated from that, though? And it could be slightly inaccurate?
It could be. A trip generation is, or a trip distribution is, is an estimate. And so it could always slightly deviate from that. However, with the, the size of this development and the amount of trips that it does generate, we wouldn't expect it to deviate too much from our assumptions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's other questions on traffic, certainly want to entertain those now. I'm gonna move on to the, to the next criteria. So the next criteria really goes to the conformity with the UDC. And again, the staff report, this was an issue that we spent actually a lot of time on because there were some questions raised by neighbors about this. So we have spent some time really double and triple checking. So this did go through the TRC. The TRC did review it, and as noted by the staff report, found that it complies with UDC criteria for parking, access, landscaping, and open space, and doesn't exceed the maximum density. One of the questions that the neighborhood asked, the neighbors asked, and we wanted to go ahead and address it upfront, was that the, the neighbors, one of the questions that the neighbors asked was, wait a minute, the lots in this project are somewhere between, the interior lots are 20 to 22 feet, the side lots are about 27 feet. And so some of the neighbors said, wait a minute, does the UDC, we believe that the UDC requires that you have alley-loaded townhomes because it's under 42 feet. There's a, there's a note in UDC 155 203E. That's, we've got a copy of it, of that ordinance in Tab 7A, if you would like to peruse it. But it, there's a table that says, you know, an R10, an R8, here's the, here's sort of the dimensional standards for different types of residential units. And there is a footnote next to a type of residential unit called alley-loaded, in which it says, if you're under 40, if your lot is under 42 feet wide, it has to be alley-loaded. The, the important distinction here is, is that the alley-loaded category is intended to describe detached housing on smaller lots. As I understand it, this ordinance was, or this provision of the ordinance arose from a project that had slightly smaller, single-family detached lots. There are some issues and concerns related to that, and thus this provision came into the code. There are separate line items for townhomes, two-plus and three-plus units. That footnote does not apply to those by the way that the code is written. We've also talked with, before, when Mr. Howe was still your planning director last week, we talked with Mr. Howe. He, and, and I'm sure he can testify for himself, but our understanding is, is townstaff agreed with that. One of the things we did is just sort of taking a look at this, since this was something that, to my understanding, townstaff hadn't really heard this argument before, nor had, nor had I. We actually asked townstaff to take a look at whether the town had previously approved, council had previously approved, special use permits involving lots 20 to 22 feet wide with front-loaded garages. And there, on the list, up on the screen, you see a list, there's 10 in the last five, five or so years. My math may be bad because it's 2017, so that's six years. There's been 10 projects, special use permit projects approved, meeting that criteria, that are front-loaded, not alley-loaded. Some of them have, some alley-loaded, some front-loaded, but have either entirely front-loaded or some front-loaded. And that, and the information, again, was provided by the town, by townstaff via public records request. A copy of the town's response to that public records request is in Tab 7B. All right. Next up is, in the criteria, is that the development not injure the value of adjoining properties. For this, we did retain a appraiser, David Lewis. All right, so I'll have David Lewis come up and introduce himself.
Good evening. Again, David Lewis, I'm a real estate appraiser, also a broker, been practicing in real estate since 1992. Have a degree in political science from UNC in 1989. Dickinson Lewis &amp; Associates is located at 4016 Barrett Drive, Suite 202 in Raleigh. And I am here on behalf of the, the applicant in order to provide evidence to satisfy the quasi judicial requirements and show evidence deemed satisfactory to support the fact that the proposed development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties. And how we do this is trying to find comparable subdivisions that have been developed recently, obviously in close proximity. And what I did was identify four projects, one being a high-density commercial project that's located at 401 East Main Street. That's the Scott Crawford redevelopment. We have three mixed-use developments, Champion West, which was shown just a bit ago. Champion West is nothing but townhome. It's located about a quarter mile south of US 70, right near the intersection of 70 Business and 42. The third development is Meadow View. It was on, let me see, that's the northeast quadrant of Shotwell and Old US 70. That's a mixed-use development project. It's got townhomes, apartments, single-family dwellings in there, as well as amenities packages. The fourth development was Academy Point. That's on East Wilson Street, right by Cooper Academy. So again, just north of downtown, very close to where TriPoint's Homes development is gonna be. Analyzing these developments is, is, what we do is look at the MLS data. MLS is a wonderful tool that you can use to identify a certain development, put a ring around it, and go back in time and see what historical sales had transferred for. This is prior to the development, and then when the development is substantially complete or has gone vertical, then we see if there are impacts. So we put a ring around it, and we go a year out from that point and see what's occurred. And we compare the data from the year prior to the year after. And the data has found that the properties around it have not been impacted at all. They've actually increased in value, these four developments, in a range of 27 to 31% in that study period. So in conclusion, in the study that was given to you guys in that packet, the data that we have from four perfectly comparable, if not more high-density developments, show that the proposed development is not going to substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties. And I'm open to any questions you've got.
Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I guess this data we just received, so I have not had a chance to look at the data you speak of. You mentioned Scott Crawford property. What, I'm a little confused with that. Isn't that a?
It's a commercial development. It's just another piece of evidence to show, okay, well, here's a high-density commercial redevelopment that required a special use permit, and it's just another piece of evidence. So we show that. We can certainly point and click on any number of commercial developments that are occurring, try to identify properties around them, see if they've sold subsequent to those developments, and show that as evidence as well. So it's just a matter of picking something different from the three other mixed-use residential high-density subdivisions.
Okay, has pretty much anybody, everybody's property increased over the past few years?
In my study, pretty much yes.
Okay, so is there different varying levels of it increased? I guess depending upon what's surrounding it? I mean, have you noticed? Do you have that?
Well, again, I've, I've got the data for these four developments, but I would say, you know, in the last year, increases have decreased slightly, obviously with interest rates and inflationary characteristics that are going on right now. Not as many people are able to finance these things, so sales are down, but property values are increasing. Growth is very extreme, demand is high, supply is low. So there really been no adverse effects from pretty much any type of developments occurring in this area.
Have you ever noticed an adverse effect?
Not in this area, no. No, it's in high demand, RTP continues to grow, and you've got Google, and you've got Apple, and all of these people coming, people relocating to the area. It's a fabulous place to be.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Mitch Thompson?
I just want to be clear, you've never testified before a council that property value would be decreased by.
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Just, just want some clarity, and appreciate your, I have a real estate license, so I understand what you're saying, and concerns too as far as MLS and all of those things. understand what you're saying and concerns too, as far as MLS and all of those things. So are you saying those, because most of the time when you're doing a comparison, you want to make sure that it's like to whatever it is. So are you saying all of those that you just gave us are pretty much like to what?
That's correct. We would call these comparable developments with the exception of the commercial development on Main Street, which again is high density. So we wanted to provide additional evidence in addition to the three that are high density, mixed use residential developments with different types of single family townhomes and apartments. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Thank you.
David, if I could just, so the property impact analysis that Dave was talking about is in tab six of the binder. David, I'm putting in front of you a document. It's got the cover sheet of Dickinson Lewis and Associates. Is that your firm?
That's correct.
Okay. And it's titled Property Impact Analysis, TriPoint Homes Townhome Project, with last date of inspection, November 6, 2022. Is this a true and accurate copy? Is this, first off, is this the report that you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is this a true and accurate copy of the report?
It appears to be, yes, sir.
I would, I would ask that Mr. Lewis be admitted as an expert in property valuation and valuation impacts. I'd also ask that his report be entered into evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, the, the last criteria is, is that the, that the project not adversely affect town plans and policies. Again, I'll just note that the staff report noted that, that the density, 4.2 units an acre is consistent with the medium density residential range, which is three to five units per acre. This property is in a whole panoply of different districts or different designations, downtown support, downtown neighborhood and high density residential. All of the, those other designations call for, permit higher density, nine units per acre or less, 10 units per acre or less, or 25 units per acre or less. And staff also concluded that the density and unit type is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Couple of things I'll note about that. So one question you might have, and I think it's a reasonable question, so this is why I took a look at it, is, okay, Toby, the overall density is 4.2 units per acre, but you're in a bunch of different designations. How do we evaluate consistency if you've got a patchwork of designations? Well, you guys thought ahead, so kudos to you. And there in the, in the comp plan, tab eight has excerpts of the, of the relevant portions of the comp plan. But in the comp plan, when you're looking at gross residential density, which is what the guidance goes by, you guys actually, the town has actually defined it and the comp plan has actually defined gross residential density as the number of dwelling units divided by the total project area without subtracting areas for open space, et cetera. In other words, when you look at this, you can't really split it up. You got to look at the total area. I'll also note that although the medium density residential calls for three to five units per acre, which we are consistent with, the, that has not been put into effect in the zoning ordinance. And in fact, in the UDC, what it says is in R8 and R10, that up to 10 townhome units per acre are permitted. And I would just note that there's pretty significant case law out there that says that you got to go by what's in the ordinance. Policies can change. And so you need to go by what's in the ordinance. Got a couple citations in there. Also have in tab 11, case law, if you, if you get a hankering to read it. But got a court of appeals case from this 1970, and then a couple of more recent court of appeals cases. The, you know, other thing I'll note is obviously that, I think you all know this, but this case is proceeding under the Policy Choice Act. It was filed back, the application was originally filed in November 2022. You all changed your ordinance in, I believe, February of this year to require that townhome projects go through the conditional zoning process. That's why I mentioned that this is probably one of your last SUPs. But under the old ordinance, both in R8 and R10, townhomes were allowed as a special use. And the inclusion of a permitted use, even when a special use permit is required, creates a prima facie, is prima facia evidence of conformity with the comp plan. I do want to spend a couple of minutes just addressing some of the things we've tried to do. We did get, a couple of weeks ago, we heard from an attorney retained by the neighbors. He asked, and he passed along some of the comments that the neighbors had and concerns that the neighbors had. One of the concerns and requests was, you know, don't build townhomes here, or don't build townhomes along Ridgecrest. That is not, at this point, feasible. So that is not something we're proposing. But we did try to address a number of the other concerns. A couple of the concerns are highlighted there in red on that map. They relate to basically traffic safety, where Ridgecrest, as it goes up and once it's paved, it's going to curve at a 90 degree angle into Gordon Street. It's a little bit of an odd, odd turn. There is concern and a desire to get some traffic coming there. And so we are proposing, and we have provided staff with a set of updated zoning conditions, or conditions of approval, excuse me, that propose that if town engineering is okay with it, right? So subject to that, the developer would install a speed bump at the northern end of Ridgecrest. There is also a concern that because of that turn, that I guess particularly folks going down Gordon Street, that there might be a safety barrier issue that people might not, you know, people might go through the road. And so there is a request for a safety barrier. We have also proposed a zoning condition that says, we will install that in the right of way if town engineering is okay with that. The other concern that we heard, particularly from these folks in Starmont Forest, so the people on the, the north and east of that sort of green highlighted area on the map, was about setbacks, buffering and things like that. And so what we are proposing is, again, this is a, we initially had on the plan that you will have a Class A buffer along that property, that sort of area right there. We're proposing to make it denser, what the city calls a, or what the town calls a Class C buffer, which is what the neighbors wanted. So we've added that. The neighbors asked for something more than a 10 foot wide buffer. We are, because of a variety of issues, including sort of just the size of the property, we're not necessarily offering a larger buffer. That being said, what I want to highlight is that that area in sort of olive green in the map, that area is not going to be graded or touched in development. So you effectively get somewhere between 15 and 50 feet behind these townhomes of sort of untouched, currently vegetated area that won't be graded and won't be touched as part of the development. That's just baked into the plan. And so as a result, what you're sort of getting is, especially on that east side is, is you'll get the natural buffer and then presumably if it needs to be enhanced for opacity sake, then you'd add some additional landscaping where the, where the town staff said it was necessary. One of the other questions and concerns we heard about was, you know, because there is, I think throughout this neighborhood, there's, there's a fair amount of topography, you know, hills. And so folks, you know, there's, you go through the neighborhood and folks have retaining walls and other things in their yards. And so there is some concern about retaining walls and wanting to make sure that there weren't huge retaining walls being built as part of this development. Long and short of it is, is that there's not, you know, there's, there's a few retaining walls mainly in the main area where we're not adjacent to any, any single family homes. The only area where we are, where we will be installed, where TriPoint would be installing a retaining wall in the vicinity of a shared property line with single family homes, is there on Meadow Book Drive. That is the southeastern portion of the development. And as it sits, we haven't, we haven't done, you know, in terms of the size and other things of that retaining wall, the prop, the development will actually be at the bottom of that wall. So the retaining wall is actually there to support all of the neighbors' properties which stand, which sit uphill. And we will be providing a landscape buffer again at the top of, of that hill along the, along the property line. So we have not, not changed those plans mainly because we don't, our belief, again, our belief is, is that the concern was really about having retaining walls that would loom over people. And so we looked to make sure that that was not an issue. And in this case, this is the only retaining wall adjacent to a property. And again, that wouldn't loom over, that would be not visible from adjacent properties. That is it. We are available for questions. And we would ask, I do appreciate your patience, both with me initially and during this, this presentation. To the extent that there are folks who speak in opposition, I would request the opportunity for my client to be able to respond.
There will always be rebuttal.
Thank you.
We have a question from Councilman Case.
Thank you for a, for a presentation. I do have a question about your finding of fact number two and what you wrote on the, the application. Can you go to that? And can you, not, no, it's on your application?
On application?
Yeah, maybe on Ben's presentation, actually. so if you could read, I guess you could read that response or see if that first sentence or part of that sentence, what is, what does that accept portion on the application that is not meeting the UDC requirements?
So I'll take the blame for that. I think that's, that's what you would call lawyer language. We, when we submitted this in, in November of 2022, we were, we were trying to submit everything and we didn't know if there would be issues where we might ask for an exemption or otherwise. Again, we are not, and in this case, the evidence shows that, again, through TRC review through, and otherwise, we have shown that we comply with all applicable requirements.
Okay, thank you. I know you touched base of this earlier, but you said roughly 15 acres is open space.
Correct.
So what would the density be? I guess the net density of the development, if you took that open space out of the equation?
If you will forgive me for trying to do math in my head really fast, I believe it would be 15 acres, roughly 8.2 units per acre.
Okay, okay.
8.3.
That's all the questions I have right now. I may have some more in a minute.
And one thing I will say, if I could, in relation to that, I don't have the presentation up round, but the one thing to keep in mind is, is while there is a significant amount of that open space that is in the area north, so there is a stream that essentially bisects, you know, the largest, the big chunk of property that's part of this development. There's a stream that bisects it, runs along City Road north and then sort of takes a right, right at the southeast corner of the adjoining townhome development. So, so as you can see, it sort of takes a right and then goes over towards Ridgecrest Road on a east west general trajectory. So the area to the north of that, that's sort of between Sam's Branch and that stream is, is, is sort of going to be open space, but that is not all of the 15 acres. There's a significant amount, because of steep slopes and just other stuff, there's a significant amount of open space within the development. So I think it's about, it's somewhere between 10 and 11 acres that if you take, if you basically took out the, everything in the buffer, which I think is, again, we would contend is, or we do, can, do strongly contend is not the criteria that should be held to, we should be held to the total property. But if you were to answer your question, I think you're closer to 120, to, to a six or seven unit per acre, if you're, if you're looking at, you know, area that has more or less been deemed by the developer practically undevelopable.
Actually, you made me think of another question now. Did you, is there, is there a stormwater engineer or anybody like that, I guess, able to come and speak regarding to the, I guess, the slopes? Obviously, there's some slopes or some streams and I'm sure that's going to be.
Yeah. I was hoping he were to speak. I think he infused himself.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Could you just elaborate on, I guess, the procedures or what you're looking for?
I'd be happy to. So as Toby was mentioning, we, we've got about 30 plus acres here of raw land. It's encumbered by jurisdictional streams, jurisdictional wetlands. There's been a study done by another consultant. The biggest thing for us when it comes to stormwater is, you know, we're going to be working, what we've studied early on as part of the special use permit, is we've looked at primary, grading primary drainage. So what we've done is we've tried to do our best to maintain the drainage patterns in the direction they're going, into the stream, into the wetlands, and also making sure that we're not trying to increase more runoff if it's going to the east towards the single family residence that abut us to the east, right? So one of the things that you'll see on the plans is we've accounted for stormwater control measures, right? And that's for making sure that we don't have post-developed runoff, when we develop, have it be more than the pre-developed runoff today. And so we have, I think it was one, two, three stormwater control measures that we will be fine tuning, designing and running detailed calculations when we get to the engineering design of this. And we'll be working with engineering to ensure that we meet state requirements. NCDQ has some state requirements that we have to work with in terms of erosion sediment runoff. We'll have detailed calculations, not only for pre and post conditions, but also hydraulic conditions that'll help us size storm drain pipe, structures for these ponds, and of course, inlets that help capture the water in the curb and gutter system that will be implemented, not only for the onsite roads, but we have some improvements that we're going to be making on Ridgecrest, edge water. Wherever we have units fronting the street, we will have curb and gutter systems. Wherever there, there are existing lots that aren't owned by TriPoint, we will have an edge of pavement and roadside ditch that'll be provided until that, those units come in and develop their lots, and then they will be responsible for improving that curb and gutter system. All of this combined comes into account, not only now as a preliminary nature, but also will come in even more when we get into detailed engineering.
Thank you. So I guess when you take, you know, the land like that and you take all the impervious and the previous and you get rid of a decent portion of it, I mean, can you completely, ever completely mitigate stormwater runoff?
We, we will, we try to do our best to mitigate stormwater runoff, most definitely. Biggest thing, what we don't want to do is make things any worse than they are today, right? We don't want to have water running off to the backyards, for instance, to the east. We've had our neighbor, when we had our neighborhood meeting, we had a lot of individuals ask, you know, what's going to happen with the drainage along our backyards? What we don't want to do is impact the drainage runoff even more so, where we're going to have erosion sediment runoff and creating ditches or, or runoff to the point where we're going to start scattering into people's backyards, existing trees, existing fences. So we will do everything we can to mitigate and improve that runoff in its final condition. Yes, sir.
So when I hear mitigate, it, it sounds like there's, there might be somewhat of an impact, I guess.
Well, there's always impacts with drainage. Once we disturb something, there's, there's always impacts with drainage. At that point, when we start moving dirt, when we start bringing in pavement, curb and gutter system, new homes, there's always an impact to drainage. We have to do our best to help minimize that impact as best possible. And there's a number of ways. With our storm drain design, we implement storm drain pipe in the streets. We implement catch basins to help capture the water. We implement stormwater control measures to help capture that flow and slowly release it once those higher storms come into. into play, whenever we get a good rain event. But, you know, once again, once you take a shovel and start touching any piece of raw land, you pretty much have impacted it. So we do our best to try to mitigate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just want to, all right, so looking at the existing development there in Starmont, it goes, you know, that's all downhill. And the, at the bottom of the development, there's already an existing pond behind those houses. And from what I think you're, I just wanted to make sure your response, Mr. Casey, is that you can't guarantee that water won't run down there?
I don't think anybody can. I, I think we're going to do our best to, once again, we will look at the existing drainage patterns prior to fine grading, prior to storm drain improvements, prior to these stormwater control measures, and do our best to maintain those drainage patterns.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. If I could, Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to ask Javier just a follow-up question, if I could. Javier, I've got up on the screen, we've got the proposed townhomes on Ridgemont, so that's right next to the Starmont development. This is, and you mentioned earlier, this is the area that we heard some concerns about. Can you talk about the measures that are being taken in this plan to mitigate stormwater runoff as to those adjoining properties?
So a few things that we're doing here on those lots to the right, it's about 10 or 12 there. We will be grading a majority of the houses towards Ridgecrest, to the left, to the west. On the backside, wherever we can't control some of that roof runoff, and we can do this a number of ways. We have curbing gutter systems, excuse me, not curbing gutter, but downspout gutters that come off of the roof, eaves, where we can help capture some of that runoff from the backside of the house and get that into a subsurface storm drain and pipe it towards Ridgecrest is one good way to capture a lot of that runoff. But for some of that runoff that runs off towards the rear, and it's going to run off out to the rear of the pad, or the lot, and get in some, get into some ditches, private ditches that run across from lot to lot via swell, typical swell in this case would be a V ditch, trapezoidal shaped ditch. That'll drain in, or convey it towards a drop inlet, a drop inlet where we'll capture the water that's running via that ditch. And same thing, we'll dump that into a storm drain system and pipe it out to the street. And then where we tie back into existing grade with contouring, finished grade contours, a lot of that will just basically taper back into existing conditions like it is in terms of the direction. And so we will do a multitude of things, create a drain ditches across these, across the rear of the lots, drop inlets, and then via storm drain system that'll help pick up a majority of that flow and convey it back towards Ridgecrest into a storm drain system, and then over to the stormwater control measure that you see there to the northwest.
All right, anyone else? Ms. Archer?
Thank you. I had a question about the proposed layout. So I don't know if you want to speak, speak to that. So looking at just the overall layout of the site, it just looks different than what we typically see. So I wanted to touch on this, especially for multifamily developments. Typically, we see the buildings clustered more or less together in a way that's kind of smooth and connected and has flow, like what you're proposing there in phase one of the plan, that sort of central circular area. But in this plan, you include two other phases that are just kind of disjointed from that phase one. So can you describe the reason for that layout and how that, that disjointed kind of layout affects the existing neighborhood?
I think a big part of this here was just because of the tracts of land that they were pursuing to buy from the seller, right? I mean, if, it would have been nice to combine all of these phases into that center pot area where we have phase one. Unfortunately, we have existing streams that have riparian buffers on either side for a total of 50 feet, 100 feet wide, 50 and 50 on either side. And that's what you see, those little dash lines kind of wrapped around the west side of phase one. And then in the middle of, between phase one and phase two, we have a jurisdictional stream that also impacts and goes right through that area. If those two items were not on this piece of property, then we probably could have squeezed in a lot more townhomes in this area to cluster them more together, like you mentioned. But we were restricted from that, not to mention, because of the code, resource conservation areas are not to be impacted. That's a hundred-year floodplain, that's a jurisdictional stream, that's a jurisdictional wetland, and then steep slope areas. All of that combined makes it very tough to develop in that phase one. Phase two, phase three came into play with extra property that the seller was trying to convey to tripoint homes, allowed us to have, find the opportunity to squeeze in some more townhomes, which are not encumbered, no streams, no wetlands, except for the little purple box immediately north of Stormwater 3, that's kind of vacant there, next to Edgewater. That would have been a good place to put the stormwater. However, that too is also encumbered. It's got a jurisdictional stream that deadends in that corner and has a riparian buffer that wraps around. So it really didn't serve any purpose to be able to put some more development there. But the disconjoining that we have here between phase two and three is just that, the ability to utilize extra land and try to get some more units in there.
Just to build on the second part of my question there. So what I'm trying to get at is how this kind of disjointed nature, and I, and I understand the limitations and what you're trying to get, but how that feels for the surrounding neighborhood that's living with this development, that's not your kind of smooth clustered typical multifamily development. It's kind of one main, almost campus, and then these two kind of pods. Just how that feels and just the character of the neighborhood?
I mean, when you look at it, it's definitely more dense. I guess, is what you're trying to confirm, right, is we've got some single-family lots that are a little bit bigger in size. Looking at the size of these, you know, at least an acre or more, you're not going to have many buildings on that, right? And unfortunately, phase two, phase three, with what we're doing here, townhomes, it's going to, it's going to be more dense. It's going to be more dense.
So can I ask a follow-up to that?
Absolutely.
And I'm kind of just digging into this here, but.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So that, would you say then that this proposed plan, which groups the townhomes together, and then the open space together, is not similar to the character of the neighborhood on the existing Starmont and Edgewater streets?
I think if you were looking between, you said Edgewater and which other one?
Um, Starmont.
Which is to the bottom.
Yeah.
Looking at this graphic that we're looking at right now, you, you can see more density, phase two to phase three versus what you see there. You go across the street to the east of Edgewater, you're probably going to see the same very similar density that you do here, though.
Right.
Now, two different products, single-family versus townhomes, but if you jump over one street, you'll see the same density, smaller lots.
Right. That's kind of what I was getting at. So for, for kind of zeroing in on Starmont and Edgewater, that, and what I'm just getting at is this proposed development, especially that the two pods there are not similar to what's existing.
In terms of what's backing up to it.
Right. Thank you.
Understood.
And on that note, would you say that there's any sort of transition there between those existing streets and the proposed townhomes? Is there any sort of transition?
Unfortunately, not. I mean, if we owned, or TriPoint owned, those parcels of land on the east side of Ridgecrest, north of Meadowbrook, there likely could be room for transition. Unfortunately, they don't. So I think we did our best to utilize the land that was up for sale and go in with townhomes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Archer, if you don't mind, I've been talking with my client, especially in relation to the question about transitions. And in recognition of that, I guess, I'll note, I noted a couple of things and then sort of outlined the transition. So in terms of the purple area, on, you know, what I'd say there is, is that is in a downtown neighborhood, downtown sport. It is supposed to be denser. So I think, and the properties across the streets, so that is a portion of that neighborhood that has not been developed, right? So can we get you to speak into the microphone? My apologies.
Thank you.
So that is a portion of the property, so that is a portion of the neighborhood to the north that has not been developed. The properties to the south, you see, are a mix of widths and sizes. They were originally platted back in 1923, and they are, they were originally 50 feet wide. You see some of the old ones that are 50 feet wide. Some of them are, are, have been combined. But in other words, you see a denser product as you go south, you're in the downtown area. That being said, you know, on Ridgecrest, again, we do think that, you know, what, what we would, you know, what I would say to your, you know, clustering is, is that the, the portion of phase two that is on the west side of Ridgecrest is really part of that cluster. It's part of that one larger parcel. The portion that, we do recognize that the portion to the east is a bit of a, could use some transition. And so what we would propose is that we would, there are, I'll have to count them out, but we would reduce the maximum number of townhomes by whatever's on the, on the east. I think it's, I want to say it's 12, but I'm going to have to count. And so please don't hold me to it until I count. And we would propose that those would be developed as detached, single-family homes consistent with, with the applicable zoning. So we don't have a site plan for it. But I believe that the, I spent a lot of ti, I've spent a lot of time looking at the old maps. Johnson County has some good, good mapping that shows you what the old lot lines were. And I think there's three or four lots in there. So I think that's what you're talking about. I don't know the acreage off the top of my head, but I think it is zone R8. So whatever that, whatever that density would be, we would just propose that that be consistent with the existing zoning.
And just trying to wrap my head around this in the moment here. So are you, is there a way, is there a pointer or something you could point out where we're talking about? Or the, the conversion to single-family home?
Oh, there we go. All right. Can you guys see this?
Yeah.
At all? Okay. So this area where the arrow is, this portion.
Thank you.
We would say, would be, so would no longer be townhomes. We would reduce the maximum number of townhome units permitted by that. Again, off the top of my head, I think it's either 12 or 13, but I can't recall off the top of my head. And, and instead, what will be permitted there is whatever's permitted in terms of existing zoning by right, which is, you know, whatever it is for R8 or R10. I think it's R8, but I'd have to, I'd have to double check myself. And if, if you guys need any further clarity or would like to ask further questions about that, you know, I think what my client is trying to do is try to balance both a desire to provide a, a product that meets sort of a, you know, an affordability threshold, right? So part of the issue is, is that, you know, when these, when the Edgewater neighborhood was built back in the, I think a lot of those homes were built in the late 60s or 70s, some may, may have been built later. You know, obviously the pricing of, of what you could get in Clayton and for what price was different than it is in, in 2023. And so they're looking to try to get something that meets the needs for people that think about, that could pay, you know, afford about a $300,000 home or in the 300s. So that's the goal. That's sort of what they're trying to achieve here. They have tried to be thoughtful in terms of environmental things, environmental issues and environmental constraints. We think it's frankly a benefit, you know, the area to the north of the stream, south of the South, Sam's Branch Greenway, as, as I understand it, and if anybody's a mountain biker, I believe there's some pretty good mountain biking trails up there. Those will be untouched. So a lot of this transition is going to, you know, a lot of the open space that the neighborhood has enjoyed will remain. But I will underline, and as we've got, you know, as we've put into the record, a lot of this area was, was always intended to be developed. It's intended to be developed for 50 years. The issue has just been, for, for whatever reason, and I can't guess why, they didn't do it in 1970 or the 70s, but there's a number of lots that haven't developed. But we are sensitive to the, to the neighborhood's concerns, and so are proposing that.
Mr. Casey?
I'm sorry. Mr. Casey, thank you for that concession. Still looking at phase three, though. I see single-family in that area as well. So I know that maybe solves or supports the other, but, I mean, to me, that's still, you know, rags a transitional area.
Okay. I'll certainly, obviously, I'm, I'm by the representative, I'll, I'll talk to my client. Again, what I'd note is, is that, that, that in some ways, it's, it's from the town zone guidance, comprehensive plan, et cetera, the town is actually calling for significantly denser product in that, that, in that phase three, that, that is what the town's comprehensive plan calls for in terms of, you know, what's consistent and what's not.
Obviously, I was just going based on what you, what your, your testimony earlier regarding the phase two section over there you pointed out. So, but thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Sims?
I just need to get some clarification on, on one thing. I apologize, this would be the last one, hopefully, here. So my, my need your traffic engineer up here, might need her.
Do you need, do you want to talk to her?
Yeah, she's probably, she's probably going to have to answer the particular. And it's more just a clarification. So I was reading the, the letter and the, both the things that you guys got up here, try to go through this as quickly as possible. But you said on North O'Neill Street has, in 2017, you used the data, 7,600 vehicles per day, correct? As in, from the 2017 data, which is fine. But you look, put in there as far as an increase, applying a growth rate of 1% at 8,068 vehicles per day. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that's basically an increase of 468. So the line below, you said, based on the proposed site traffic distribution, you're, you're saying approximately 188 vehicles will be added to North O'Neill Street. Is that 468, including that 188? Or that's not including that 188?
It is not including that 188. There is another number further down in the paragraph. There's another number further down in that paragraph of 11,136, which includes the proposed development traffic in addition to, to other approved developments in the area and additional growth to get us to the build-out year.
That was my next question, and you answered it. Thank you. So you do have it in there as far as other growth or other areas that are looking at coming into there?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? You good, Mr. Sims?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Casey?
Sorry, Councilman Sims had a good point. So back, if the traffic engineer could come back up. And, and that's, I mean, we just got this. So, I mean, it's kind of hard to dissect it.
Understood.
You know, right now, it says the annual growth rate's 1%. So, I mean, have we, is are you basing on what we've been growing? Because we've been growing a lot. So you basing on our growth rate since 2017 to now? Or is that an arbitrary percentage number?
Yep. I can look at those numbers. We based it on the historical growth rate in the area.
And when you say the area, what's, what, the town of Clayton or?
Yes, the town of Clayton. And we looked at.
So we've grown 1%? I'm sorry. That's why I don't like, I'll say it again, I don't like it at least last minute.
Yeah, we looked at the growth between 2015 and 2023 to get that growth rate.
Of 1%?
We looked at around North O'Neill Street, along City Road, and along Main Street, and calculated the average growth rate that we saw in the area.
Same as well. All right, thank you.
And that's the, that's the vehicle traffic, the increase in vehicle traffic is about 1%.
Can I ask one follow-up question on that? Because I know that y'all are reading this live, and, and I know that that is hard, given everything you guys do. In addition to the 1% rate, well, is the 1% rate, does that account for all development? Or is that, is that a background rate that, that does not include all other development?
That is a background rate. And so on top of that 1% growth rate, we also calculated the, the trips from other approved developments in the area. developments in the area, including the Carolina Overlook and the Ashcroft Phase Two are also included in that, as well as this proposed development. All went into our calculations. So that would be on top of the 1%.
Okay. All right. Sure.
This wasn't so much a question as a comment, just following up on the last topic. When you were talking about what the current growth plan and, and land use is calling for in that area, and I just wanted to say that I, I see where you're coming from. Certainly, townhomes are allowable in these areas, and it might even be consistent with our plans and policies. But this process here tonight is meant to help us assess whether or not this specific area, right? Because these designations and, and areas of the growth plan cover wide swaths of, of land. So tonight's about deciding if this specific area fits for townhomes and, and if this specific plan is, is agreeable to that as well. So it just was, is a follow-up statement.
Thank you. And, and we appreciate that, and, and certainly, I, I didn't in any way intend to, in any way question y'all's prerogative to, to do that. I was trying to do two things. One is to sort of give you some insight on why we thought one was different than the other. You know, frankly, the second is, is because this is a special use permit process, it's a little bit different, as you all know. And so one of the things that I was thinking about in doing that is that our burden in presenting evidence is to present evidence, and it's to the criteria that is set out in the, in the UDC. And what the UDC says is, is are we consistent with policies? And so I was just underlining that in terms of policies that the town has set, we, you know, that, that, that is consistent. That was my only intent in underlining that. I do want to emphasize, and again, this is sort of just because we've started having this conversation, I want to emphasize this. We are, I hope that this council feels like we are listening very carefully to what y'all are saying in real time. And, and so again, we would like the opportunity to rebut. And then again, if there are continued concerns, we, we certainly crave guidance and, and articulation from council, because my client is, is here, and they're trying to figure out, you know, what is council thinking? How do we do this? How do we make this something that is a win-win for everybody? So we are not, again, we recognize this is a special use permit process. As an attorney, again, I don't want to go too far in this, but as an attorney, I have my obligation to make sure that I, I present a case and do the technical things that I need to do. At the same time, we recognize that this is a process that is in many ways a development process, similar to what you guys would do in rezoning. We are hearing, and, and again, I hope what you've seen is, is we are trying to address concerns that the neighbors have brought to us and try to really move forward. This is not a project that has come to you where we're saying, we've told everybody, go pound sand, we've met the technical criteria.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'm going to give the floor to the opposition. And before we begin, I'm going to ask, if you came out this evening to speak against this, would you please raise your hand? If you are not in favor of this issue, could you please raise your hand? Okay. Thank you. That's good for the council to know. Second of all, I would like to offer the floor to those who were sworn in to, to, to speak. If you stood up and, or raised your hand and were sworn in to speak, I'm going to turn the podium over to you. I'm going to ask two things. One, would you please keep your comments to two minutes, as we have many people who would like to speak? And two, would you help us not to be redundant? So if someone already mentions a concern before you have the opportunity to get to the microphone, that will be noted on the record, and there won't be a lot of need for reemphasizing that. But we do want to make sure that your voice is heard, and we want to make sure that it's on the record.
Mayor McCloy, to make this a little smoother, can I ask who all, I've got four people who are going to testify as witnesses. I know you want me to keep it short. Can I just see if there's anyone else who's going to speak other than me tonight? That's outside of my list.
Who is sworn in to speak? And you need to verify that those that you think are going to speak have been sworn in.
Okay. Who's left us sworn to speak? So I see, raise your hands again for me, please. So I just have one that's not represented by me. Counsel, I also need to be sworn in, and do you still want me to try to keep mine to five minutes, two minutes, something of that nature?
Absolutely.
I can. Would you mind swearing in, please?
Excuse me. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
So help you God, and if you'll just sign those sheet.
I'm attorney in Smithville, North Carolina. It's Spence, Carter, and Reed. I do have about four people who wanted to testify, but I think I could probably run you through all of this. Generally, I'm going to just put for the record that so far as the ones I'm representing, there's about 14 homeowners who all live across that area who've come out to me and asked to represent, which represents about nine to 10 of the houses in that area. Just for the record, we want to object to any material not introduced into evidence by petitioner at this point, just what they haven't introduced. If he comes back up and introduces something else that's separate, but anything that's not including that pack that we object to. Second, I also want to thank the developer, particularly the attorney, for trying to work with us a little bit. He has reached out and tried to work with me the last few weeks to try to come to something. So we are appreciative of that, but there are still some issues, such as how it actually transitions. Now, with that being said, we also ask that, based off the conditions that the applicant has already said they're willing to do, if council decides to approve this, we ask that they do have to follow those conditions, which include the Class C buffer they mentioned, the portions of road where they are going to see if engineering will allow, allow speed bump and barrier to protect on certain areas, as well as the Phase Two detached homes, instead of it being townhomes, as well as the retaining wall that was mentioned for the sharp curves. There was really only two main points we wanted to present on tonight. One, when it comes to finding the facts, this does violate the existing character beside them. So when you're looking at to see how it transitions, as council's already pointed out. And two, that doesn't meet the future land use map. Now, that's probably the easiest argument and the quickest, I'll start there. When you're looking at the future land use map, yes, they consider this whole thing as one subdivision. Well, if you're actually looking closer at it, and you look at Phase Two, which is along Ridgemont in yellow, that portion is a medium-density residential in the, in the future land use. That would be three to five homes, not up to an essential Mount, Mount Moore. Now, they decide to do the detached homes, we're fine with that, but that was the only issue we wanted to point out there. So that goes to the condition of the neighborhood. Currently, when you're looking at conventional subdivision regulations, and you look at a R8 and single-family, you've got a minimum lot area of 8,000, you've got a minimum lot width of 60 feet. Now, that's important, because if you're going to consider what you have in, for townhomes, if you look at your, somewhere where it's defined about what you can do, your best, easiest place to look would be your open space subdivision. Now, I don't, I seem to have forgotten to put it here, your open space subdivision, you have the requirement for townhomes where it has to be 3,000 square feet is the minimum requirement. You have to have, I believe it's 21 feet across the front for the width. Well, right now, we're looking at width that's 22 to 27 feet. That's really what we're looking at. When you compare that to what's in the neighborhood, that's nowhere near. Right now, if you were trying to do a single-family home in that neighborhood, it'd be 60 feet if you're under conventional subdivision standards. Even under the open space subdivision standards, which my clients understand that would, could make sense for this, if you're trying to transition this into a more dense area, it would be 42 feet, which is the whole reason that alley load was brought up in the first place. Yes, alley load is addressed as a footnote particularly, but that's because your minimum single lots were already 42 feet. So you don't, you don't have to worry about alley load if it meant 42 feet. Alley load only applied 42 feet or less. Now, what we're requesting, we're requesting that not only is Phase Two the detached homes, we'd also like to see Phase Three be the detached homes, because it is right across from neighbors who now have had two neighbors this whole time, and are going to have potentially seven right across the street from when you get to that portion of the road. So they're asking that they do a change on that. But we also have the issue that my clients do not believe that these properties really interact with each other. The fine fact does require that they, that the existing character is maintained or not hurt or anything of that nature. So we want to make sure that's met, and right now, that's not met. That's what defines the fact that has to be met for a special use to go through. I also want to point out to the fact that council already asked the, the appraiser that was an expert that was testified, put in by the applicant regarding the value. That's another fine fact that has to have, it has to be that the value's not injured. Not increase, not decrease, it says injured. So the question that comes to that, that council already brought out, okay, well, you looked at single-family versus townhomes. That's fine. You saw an increase generally, because you've seen that everywhere. But when asked about single-family compared to single-family, that wasn't really addressed. There was no direct way to address if the single-family versus single-family would actually be a higher increase versus would it be the same thing as a townhome? Which creates an issue of, okay, is this, is this actually injuring the value? There's a chance it is now, because we haven't addressed looking at single-family and single-family versus single-family and townhome, and what those values would go, what the values would do, and the difference between them. Counsel, I'd be happy to call just some of these witnesses to keep them a little bit more on pace, since you still wanted to do two minutes. So I'm going to call the one who's been patiently waiting with his kids who have been squirming around, so that we can just quickly go through where he lives and what his property currently looks like. Marcus DeLello, please come up. And I'll try to be nice and loud like I'm in court, so I don't have to keep moving back and forth with them. If I'm too quiet, just yell at me, I'll get a little louder. Thank you. We're going to do this pretty quick, so please state your name for the record.
Marcus DeLello.
Now, and where do you live?
114 Edgewater Drive.
Now, just for clarification, as I try to work this computer, for illustre purposes, 114 is where my pointer is right now, correct?
That's correct.
So you are right, right behind development, that'll be on?
Phase Two, on Ridgecrest, 14 townhomes.
Now, how many neighbors you have right now?
A, a single-family home on each side of me.
Okay, so you have two neighbors. Now, when Ridgecrest goes in, based off, you've looked at the plans, correct?
Yes, sir.
About how many neighbors do we have then?
I have, you average two to three people per townhome, 14 townhomes. Do the math, 28, 36, 40-ish new neighbors in the lot directly behind our house.
Okay. And so you're a single-family home. Who all lives there with you right now?
My wife, nine, and two kids.
So you've got four people in that home, and you're going to have about seven. How many neighbors do you say are probably behind you?
I have, we said 14 townhomes, two to three apiece, so.
Yeah, so it's going to be quite a bit more?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what's been the, how long have you lived in this neighborhood?
We moved here in May of 2019, so four years, four months.
Okay. The general character, can you tell me a little bit more about this community?
The general character is what attracted us to it. It was quiet, it was tucked away, proximity to downtown. They mentioned older homes. My home was built in 91, we continue to update that. The quiet, the wildlife, the proximity to downtown is why we chose to move in. My kids play in both the streams, hunting for bugs, frogs, whatever. So that's why we settled on the neighborhood.
Now, about how large are these roads? Is it easy for two cars to fit beside each other?
Normally, one car will have to slow off and pull off to the side to allow the other car to pass.
Okay. And since you've been there, how familiar are you with the other neighborhoods around the area?
As far as like Georgetown to the east, or fairly familiar?
Okay. So Georgetown, tell us about Georgetown. What type of neighborhood?
Georgetown, I'd say is a higher-density residential, similar to where I moved from Boise, Idaho, where you can like stand between the houses and touch your, touch your neighbor's house. We didn't want that, so that's why we chose the neighborhood we did.
Now, is that the same answer different than where you live now?
Yes, sir.
Now, are you opposed to single-family homes being there on maybe a 42-foot front lot? So it's a smaller lot, but it would allow more single?
I'm not opposed to development. It's inevitable. We just like to retain the character that exists in our neighborhood.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell council before I let you go?
I don't have any, no other words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, counsel, to try to get to this and end it rather quickly, counsel, if you have any questions for him, I'm happy to run back up, but I didn't tender him as an expert, so I don't know if y'all would want to get into that. When you look at these properties and you look at density, it is kind of important to look at them individually. So right now, if you look at Edgewater Drive and Gordon Street, there's 10 homes existing there over about 5.32 acres, and that's 1.9 homes per acre. If you look at Barnes Street, there's eight homes, there's about 3.29 acres and 2.4 homes per acre. So when you do the proposed neighborhood, and you actually look at it by phase, you get a little bit different of a picture. Because let's understand, we're not fighting Phase One. Phase One fits, it makes sense. But Phase Two and Three aren't quite as smooth with that. So if you look at Redcrest Drive, Phase Two, you've got 32 homes, four, over 4.68 acres, so that's six point homes per acre. Okay, still within the 10, but you're substantially jumping up from what's currently there. You look at Meadowbook Drive, Phase Three, which is another big issue, you've got 17 homes over 2.28 acres. Now you're looking at almost 8.6 homes per acre, which is a substantial increase. It does not really allow for a transition. It makes, it's almost a complete change of character for the area. So counsel, what we're asking is that you do one of a few things. We understand the conditions that have been already set out. We ask that you'd also have a condition that Phase Three would need to be single-family homes. Now, we understand it could be on the 42 feet, where it's the open subdivision, which would be a little bit easier to build more homes to make it more profitable. Or we ask that at least if, with all these changes that are being made, it gets sent back down to a technical review committee to maybe give the applicant or a chance to get something changed to make it fit better into the character of the area. If not, we ask that you deny it, but we understand that the applicant has tried to work, and we do see that they have tried to do some things. Counsel, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not going to call any more witnesses. I apologize. If one of you wants to spend a minute or two, you can, but I don't want to keep counsel here.
Any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Marcus, may you sign the oath sheet?
Yes.
Thank you.
So council has some further questions for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So at this time, I'll, I'll give the floor back to the applicant for any rebuttal before I call the council into deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Couple things. So I'll note that in terms of, so again, as I noted, our initial burden is a burden of presentation under North Carolina law. And the only issues that I've heard the neighbors raise relate to compliance with the UDC and consistency, they say generally, I think the, the UDC is pretty particular that it's a consistency with, and I'm going to read it just to make sure. Consistency, application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. In terms of that, of that standard number four, I haven't heard any evidence as to existing standards for development. There are some representations that I don't know what they're based on related to density in the neighborhood. I would represent that there's far more than 10 lots in the Starwood Forest neighborhood, so I'm not quite sure where that number's coming from. But beyond that, the, the only neighbor who testified, I believe Mr. Marcus, at 114 Edgewater, said that he would have no opposition to single-family homes. That's what has been proposed there as a result of our amended. That's what has been proposed there as a result of our amended provision. So I think we've tried to listen and address those concerns. In terms of the UDC, again, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to go, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but the claim here that you're hearing from the neighbors is that somehow that there needs to be some re-review of compliance, which is, again, as we presented, it's inconsistent with what the council has ever done. The person that is under your UDC that is, is the person that's supposed to be interpreting those provisions is Mr. Howell. I would, if, if the counsel thinks it would be appropriate and useful, I'd ask Mr. Howell to come up and just speak to that issue. If you don't think it's useful, happy to let that sit. But I think that if you guys are somehow questioning whether or not front-loaded townhome lots of 20 to 22 feet are permitted under the UDC, I think getting staff to testify to that would be helpful.
No, you better ask your attorney. Are we good? I think we're good.
Okay. And that's it. Again, there was no question, there was, you know, in terms of traffic, you know, state law, both in traffic and appraisal, while there was some, I guess, argument about injury to valuation, again, I think that's what we testified to. What state law says is that in order to testify as to those issues, you have to have an expert. The only expert that's been presented to you are the, the experts that we have presented. So I do just want to underline that. If there are any other questions, obviously, we are available to answer them or any other concerns, again, we'd be happy to discuss. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, any further questions?
I just want to make just a couple of statements. Thank you, Marcus, for your service, by the way. And another thing, this is kind of short notice, getting the Ridge, Ridgecrest Towns, CUP, I mean, I'm sorry, SUP. So it's going to take us some time to kind of get through it to make sure, you know, that everything is consistent with the plan, which staff has said that it is consistent. But this is the last, you know, this is a final thing, you know, kind of late notice for us to get this binary and for us to kind of go through it ourselves as the approving, as the approving body. So that's the only statement that I would like to make for that.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Well, then, at this time, thank everybody for your input. I'm going to call the counsel into deliberation. And once called into deliberation, there'll be no more question or answers from town Okay, absolutely. My apologies.
Happy to let them speak. I was just going to say that to the extent that you all want me to read out any of our proposed additional conditions, happy to do so either before you close it or...
Okay, and we may. I'm sorry, I thought the attorney and all that was all in one, but if there are individuals who were sworn in that wish to speak, yes, sir, please take forward, state your name and address for the record.
With that, I just want to hand off some maps that I'm going to be referring to. Council, I don't, council, their council wants one? We're going to have to share, but I only have...
Well, I think make sure the council gets. No problem.
And I can get them. Thank you, Mr. Abbott, Ms. Archer, Mr. Casey, Mr. Sims, and Mayor, and for the rest of the town officials here. My name is Kurt Tech. I'm going to sign in. I live at 101 Gordon Street, bottom of Edgewater, probably one of the lowest houses topographically. I live right on the corner and have lived there for approximately 12 years. And my background is, I'm a former educator and kind of well-versed, but I do have some envi, a degree in earth sciences and environmental sciences and have taught college level content in that area. Regarding the map, I just presented real briefly. The orange part, which I put "us," is the Star Mount Forest community. And you can see on that aerial just how dense it is. It's even hard to see the homes amongst those beautiful, large trees. Georgetown, from talking to the few neighbors that were there, Georgetown went in in the 80s and there was a lot of uproar against that because of the density. But I just want you to look at the different areas surrounding us. I've labeled and tried to outline in pink the old, what I'm referring to is the old town area, which includes Barnes Street that our attorney referred to, and he mentioned the density of the homes. But even from being sandwiched between Georgetown, which by the way, has a huge, there's a ravine and a huge wooded area, it's probably 100 feet, that separates us from that Georgetown community. And we can't even see them a lot of the year, okay? And you might, you know, he might not realize that exists, and that's on the other side of the ravine going up. And then there's the dirt road going up that was proposed. Development, all the plots showed it would be consistent with our plots, okay? And now this is quite different. So I would just like to say that if Barnes Street is 1.9 houses per acre and it's 2-point, whatever it was on the Georgetown homes, that we'd be somewhere in the middle of that, even though our lots are bigger. You know, reasonable. So I just wanted you to have an aerial, and if you look across, I think it was referred to by their council, that new development that went up behind, around Cole Street with the big townhouses along O'Neil, that's a very, very new development that just popped up. And you can see how more dense that has even become over Georgetown. So it's a tremendous drastic difference to our lifestyle. And hopefully, you've gotten my emails with those pictures and enjoy those pictures. The couple things that were mentioned related to traffic, I just want, real briefly, the town to consider asking about sidewalks on City Road and turn lanes on City Road. Because if the projected amount is 70% that they say of the, that the several hundred cars that are going to be moving in to 128 units is blocked up frequently because there's no turn lanes, then that traffic's going to be redirected towards us. So I think at that corner of City and West Stallings, and even going into this development, there should be turn lanes because right now, you can't even walk, it's hard to walk along that road from West Stallings down to Legend Park where the greenway is. And the whole point of that greenway, which was beautiful, was to bring people into town. So really, I think we need to consider the traffic there and sidewalks for that purpose. The other issue that was brought up was the 50-foot buffer, and I'm great with that. But along with that, they say there's going to be 50% paved, paved area. And they're talking about underground drainage, but my home is probably the most impacted out of all the homes there with runoff from up in those woods down to my property. And I can send you pictures of the waterfall, of cascading water that we have controlled with berms, with underground drainage, but, and, but it can easily become overwhelmed right now. And previous to owning the house 12 years ago, there were several, three, three turn lanes of flooding of the lower level of that house. And I have, it took me several years to address where all the water was coming from, how I could redirect and, and work on it, and we have made strides. But if those drains, they can clog in 15 seconds with debris from those woods, and then water diverts to my house, which is downhill into the crawl space and then the lower finished level below that, go into that low point at Gordon. So I'm at real risk of this water mitigation thing, and the paved part of it is very concerning to me because of what I've experienced and exist, living in this house for 12 years and being flooded a couple times early on and just going out in rainstorms and watching where, how water's draining. So there's no one in Edgewater that knows about that drainage right over there better than me, and I have lots of documentation for that if you ever want it. So that is a concern, that drainage and the amount of pave, and if they are building right up to that 50-foot of vegetative buffer that they're saying, because, you know, all that is no longer going to be soaking into the ground, that means more runoff, and they're talking about mitigating some of it, but they're quite unsure. So I think, you know, I'm a little bit concerned, I'm very concerned about that. And the last issue that I'm going to approach, I'm going to drop these to you, there's something that has not been discussed, and it has to do with a cemetery existing on the develop, I only have one really fair. And, and by the way, quickly, supply and demand, I have had some business training, and supply and demand clearly says the more houses you build, the more supply there is, which means eventually the market's going to come back, back down. And, you know, that's just the reality of events that flows in real estate. So then building is not increasing our value. If anything, it's slowing the increase in value, and will have an effect down the road. As far as this cemetery area, this was in a report given to you by their attorney, Spengler Environmental, who is who did the report. And we've been asking for this report for, for months since our town hall Zoom meeting. Directly, we asked at that time, and the lawyer has requested the ground penetrating radar report. We've all requested it, that they said they had, and they just refused to give it to us until, I got it Friday, a 45-page report Friday. Okay? So in staying up all night looking at this report, I have, there's some things in this report that are quite disturbing. And I've copied a few pages and blown them up from the report. Regarding, this is related to that cemetery, which is an abandoned cemetery. It's, there are some grave markers, there are probably many that are missing, but we really don't know, okay? The, where it's plotted on their map, you can say it's roughly rectangular, but it's in a regular shape. And if you use the key, the, the, the scale key on the bottom, you can see that that is roughly 100 feet by 400 feet where they say the existing cemetery is. So I don't know how many graves could be there, but I'm assuming in fact, there could be quite a few. And this is right where Meadowbrook is going to propose to be driven through and dug up, and I think we need to be aware of this. The next page, though, is, shows their, the route, the transects that they took using ground penetrating radar. And if you look at that page, you can see the blue lines which indicate the path they took for their ground penetrating radar. If you read in that report, it says that transect number 12 to the right lower side of the map where there's white depressions the size of a grave roughly, this area is actually well outside the area of the cemetery markings, which makes us question, how far did those graves go? Because there's markings there well beyond that 100 by 400-foot area. Not only that, 12, in their own words, was supposed to be the control transect to look at what the anom, anomalies look like for the graves they knew that were there. But they didn't, the transect 12 to 15 feet to the, where's that, to the east, I think that is, side of the marker point. And they then, so they have no reference. In fact, the last page shows the, the... No, this is their map, this is their report.
It's not in that. We're happy to question their report. We're happy to question about it.
That would be great.
Right now, it's testifying to your report that he did not write, talking about information, but he is not an expert.
You don't know what my expertise is, sir. Pardon?
Yeah, well, your, your time is up, sir, anyway. And more importantly, we, we have to be very mindful in a quasi-judicial hearing that this is not a standard council meeting concept that we are in right now, where council is sitting as judge and jury.
Oh, I'm aware of that. But just so you know, that one of the members here of our community on Barnes Street had to call the sheriff to stop them from displacing grave markers, and there was a report made on that, and that exists in the record. So you can do that. You can look that up. And, you know, we need to investigate that area better because their transects are nowhere near where the graveyard is marked or where those depressions are. And they have nothing to refer to because they didn't use it. Just read their report and you'll see the contradictions. They don't have anomalies to compare. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
I normally don't object to neighbors' testimony, but that was, a lot of that testimony related to issues related to stormwater, LiDAR, and other things, which that gentleman did not provide a basis for being an expert in. I would object to consideration of his testimony in connection with it. Again, I appreciate his concerns and I'm happy to bring up testimony, but what that, what he didn't say, because he can't say it, is the reason we didn't put that report into evidence is because there, that what that report found was there is not, no grave site on the property at issue. Right? So the neighbors asked us to provide them with, so what happened was is that my client did a LiDAR study. The neighbors asked that we provide them with a LiDAR study to show that there is no, no grave, no unmarked graves on the property, and we did that. Again, I, you know, getting into transects and things like that, frankly, I'm not qualified to talk about it, so I'm not going to. But what I will say is, is there are no graves on the site, and happy to either put that... But what I will say is, is there are no graves on the site, and happy to either put that, put that gentleman's report into evidence or otherwise, if the board would like it. But again, I don't think anybody is contending that there are graves on the site.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Vic Nguyen. I live at 104 Gordon Street. I've been there for 30 years. I'm also a commercial real estate broker for the last 20 years. I'm a CCIM. I've owned and managed properties in both states where I'm licensed, North and South Carolina. To be brief, I have something, not much to give you, and something to display. Oh, sorry, I'm not quite as tall as he is. I have a, could you put that on screen for me? The overhead has been discussed a bit already. It's the character of the development of the neighborhood, starting from the 60s on Barn Street, in blue, green, and built in the 60s. Georgetown, which was a higher density, but still detached presidential. Academy Point, down in the corner, is single-family, detached, alley-loaded. Red is the new proposed area. We don't object to the people selling the land or the development there in phase, but in phase two and three, the transition from extremely high, the density to a lower density, the transition just is too abrupt. We'd like to see something different in, certainly in phase two and three. We talked earlier about the family owning the land and how long it's been owned, and you've got some documentation that shows a lot of that. And on page 471, you'll see that there are covenants restricting development. That's how brief it is.
My name is Ken Sawville, and I've lived in and around Clayton all my life, 70 years now. It's particularly on Lake Drive. And this stuff doesn't exactly back up to my property, but I'm in solidarity with these people. I don't want it either. We have a nice deck on the backyard, pretty pond back there, wildlife, ducks, wild egg. Currently, I can walk out on the deck, look over the pond, see woods or forest on the other side. And if this goes through, I'm going to look at somebody looking at me. So I'm opposed to it. And I mainly wanted to get voice that I'm opposed to it. Also, they handed you all that stuff right before the meeting. You're pretty good readers if you read all that, can make a decision this quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. All right. Anyone else that was sworn in that wishes to speak? All right. Any further rebuttal from you? All right. Well, then, with that being said, I'll call the council into deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, this is Bruce Plon right here. Before you go on, can the gentleman who provided testimony please sign in to the sheet before you close this session?
You can ask anything you want. I don't want you to wait till they finish. Do you have one in there? All right, Mr. Casey.
I do have a question to the town attorney. Maybe, I'm trying to wrap my hand around this, what the, the second to last gentleman brought up regarding, I guess, some covenants or something like that. Is that, how do we handle that? Is that permissible? Is this something that?
It's not, it's not bearing on a council decision. Those are private matters between landowners.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So as a reminder to the town clerk, we did receive a letter via email. I need to put that into the record.
We received an email from Ron Williamson in opposition of Ridgecrest, and this will be part of the minutes for tonight.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I do object to uns sworn testimony being entered into the record.
Can you speak into the microphone, because I didn't hear nothing you said?
My apologies. For, for the record, I object to uns sworn testimony being entered into the record. That email is uns sworn, so we would object to it.
All right. Ms. Archer, come right here.
Okay, we were called into deliberation, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
I was in la-la land, apparently. So I was just going to give my kind of final statement here of where I'm at for the rest of the council and the audience to hear. Basically, to use the applicant's words, the townhomes proposed in phase two and three, to me, feel squeezed into the design. The offer to convert phase two into single-family homes doesn't resolve my concerns about phase three. I believe this creates a lack of transition between the character of the existing neighborhood and the proposed development, and that would adversely affect the existing neighborhood. In addition, the proposed overall density complies with the adopted plans and policies, but the numbers don't capture how the density will look and feel due to the way that the open space and townhomes are laid out. So based on this, I find that the application is inconsistent with the character of the existing development, and therefore, finding a fact has not been met. Finding a fact number four, I do not feel has been met.
All right, Mitch Thompson.
That's exactly what I was going to speak to, inconsistent with Ms. Archer's statements. There is no transition between this higher-density development and the existing neighborhood. People purchased their homes in this neighborhood to live in a wooded area that has its own character and not encroached upon by others. And to me, to put a townhome adjacent to it significantly violates that character. That changes the character of the neighborhood completely. And that's where I go with, you know, with finding a fact number four. I don't think it's consistent. I also agree that their statement regarding phase two and phase three was that they squeezed in as much as they could, and they were willing to make a concession on phase two, but there's been no such willingness to make a concession on phase three. I'm perfectly okay with phase one, and I think, from what I hear from the neighbors and everybody, you know, phase one doesn't seem to be the issue. It's phase two and phase three. And to me, even with the concession of phase two being single-family, that doesn't address phase three, and in my mind, does not meet the finding of fact for number four.
Mr. Casey.
I want to echo the sentiments of my other council people. I also heard disjointed. I heard packed as many townhomes as possible, and also heard there were no transitions from the, from the applicant. Also, from the traffic engineer, I heard that there would be an impact. Also heard that trip generation can be deviated from. And then also from the stormwater engineer, I heard that anytime you move soil for shovel, there will be an impact. So I, similar to number, I guess, number finding a fact number four, also finding a fact number, I think it's two.
All right. Any others? Then if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Confer with the attorney that we would vote on each finding of fact separately?
I would recommend that, yes.
Okay. So if I feel the application has met three of the findings of fact, can I group those together or just?
I would suggest taking them one at a time.
Okay. And so that would look and sound like I make a motion to say that the application meets finding a fact number one. Is that kind of the format? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So in that case, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that finding a fact number one has been met, that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved.
I have a motion to, I hear a second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second that finding a fact one is satisfied. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign.
I will make a motion that finding a fact number two, hold on before I do this, has been met. The application meets all required specifications and conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning and the town code of ordinances and other applicable regulations.
A second.
We have a motion and a second that finding a fact number two has been satisfied. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Majority rules.
I want to make, go ahead.
Was that three to two or four?
Three to two. Three to two. Mr. Casey and Mr. Thompson are.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that finding a fact number three has been met, that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that finding a fact number three has been satisfied. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that finding a fact number four has not been met, has not been met. The application will adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town and violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that finding a fact number four has not been satisfied. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. So now we will need an entertain, I'll entertain a motion to deny the S U P.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the special use permit. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. The S U P has been denied. All right. Up next, under old business, yes, I will give two minutes to clear the room, and then we'll go ahead and continue our agenda. Thank you.
Yes, I actually, I think we'll clear the room. Yeah, we'll see. Yeah. 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 That was good work. It's difficult work, but it's necessary. But you know what? You know, this is a law.
You know, this is a long.
So at this time, I want to call for a 10 minute recess. So.
Can you pull your microphone down?
All right, let it call our meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda under old business is the geo bond resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Makai is not here this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and cover these next two items. For the geo bond resolution, this is the last step in being able to authorize the sale of the remaining $4.5 million of parks and rec bonds that were authorized back in 2019. We did receive a bid on the community park project. Unfortunately, we received only one bid and it does exceed budgeted funds. So the engineering department is actively attempting to negotiate with the bidder. If we are able to get that price within a funding level that we can present to you, we will move forward, but there is potential that we will have to reject the bid and go back out, which if that is the case, this bond order does allow under section 13 for the mayor or manager to adjust the dates of the sale of that bond. So moving forward tonight with an approval of this, we still will be valid later on this year if we have to rebid, just as a point of just timing. If we are not able to negotiate this bid and keep it valid, then we will likely not be able to sell these bonds until January because we will be kicked into the next audit season from a financial standpoint with the L G C. So we are recommending we go ahead and approve the geo bond order this evening, excuse me, geo bond resolution this evening. But we will probably by the end of this week have to make that go or no go decision on the current bid we are holding.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash 51.
Second. A motion and a second for the adoption of resolution 2023 dash 51. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, under new business will be budget amendments.
Mayor and town council, this item is achieving two needs right now. One, we are requesting conversion of the administrative support position currently in the admin budget as well as the H R technician position in the H R budget, both of which were permanent benefit enabled positions recently approved in the F Y 24 budget through the needs that have developed within the town, particularly in H R overall with needing to have additional staff just focused on recruiting and some other me, excuse me, other needs that we have right now with our conversion to NeoGov. And then on the administrative support with our strategic plan, getting ready to kick off, having some additional horsepower to focus on that. So the request is to convert those two current part time positions to permanent, excuse me, to full time F T Es. That would take our total F T E count from 306 to 308. It would then reduce the permanent, excuse me, the permanent part time position count from 19 down to 17. The net increase there is about $65,000 total, but we intend for lap salary to cover the majority of that. The second part of this is we do, we have had several, a few employees at this point and several others that are eligible for retirement here over the next year. What we would like to do is go ahead and get the authorization to be able to utilize lap salary to allow for the potential to fill some of those positions prior to those folks actually getting to their retirement date. That will allow us to get somebody in and potentially even have that those folks still on, you know, on the bench to be able to help train them up and get that overlap to be able to have some transfer of knowledge. So two, or excuse me, two actions under this item. One is the budget amendment and the other one is the adjustment to the ordinance that corrects the number, basically adjusts for the correction of the number of F T Es. Happy to discuss any.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Mayor.
I just want to make sure this is not like taking away from part time employees. This is for the new positions that's being moved from part time to full time, correct?
In this particular case, it's actually one, it's existing part time positions that we've had, one of which is currently filled that we would be converting that person to full time because she's already exceeding the 30 hours. The, 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 the permanent. because she's already exceeding the 30 hours, the permanent part-time position would normally keep. The other one for the HR technician is a vacancy that we have right now. So being able to convert that to permanent, permanent, full-time and be able to recruit for a full-time position. We've had a lot of interest in the one that we just had open. So we feel pretty confident we'll be able to get that one filled pretty quickly.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinances 2023-08-04 and 2023-08-05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinances 2023-08-04 and 2023-08-05. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, up next, staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
In the interest of time, I've really got only one major update to provide you. Even though Ben Howell was here this evening, we do, he officially, his last day as the planning director was last Friday. Because there was a few of these projects, such as the one that was before you this evening that Ben was deeply involved in during his time here, he has agreed to stay on in a part-time planning consultant role with the town to be able to come back, present a few of those projects so that he can give you guys whatever commentary or otherwise was discussed, as well as helping to close out a couple of those other plans that he was working on, but really more as an advisory role so that we have access to him. So in the interim, I've asked Jonathan Jacobs with the plan in the engineering department to serve as our interim planning director. Jonathan currently already has experience. He was in the planning department previously when he was in Wake Forest. He's been working on some of those long-range plans, particularly the transportation plan. But more importantly, he's been very deeply involved in the UDO process from a review standpoint. We will go ahead and he's also been working on the clarity conversion. That's the software that we're moving towards for overall for planning, engineering inspections. But also Jonathan, in terms of knowledge of the planning concepts in our UDO overall, from a day-to-day standpoint, he'll be able to be the primary contact for tech or technical content regarding that. With regards to more process-related stuff, what we're calling is our development services team. So the permit technicians, development services coordinator and development services manager. We have adjusted their reporting structure to report directly to deputy town manager Barbie. So effectively process-wise and timelines or issue escalation will flow through that arm of the, of the department, if you will. Jonathan will keep the day-to-day with Bruce and the other planning department staff with regards to that technical knowledge on the planning department. So in the interim, we'll also still have access to Ben at nights and weekends if we have comments or questions that come up just outside of our normal purview. But we are actively recruiting for the planning director position is out there. Please share it with any of your network if you, if you know anybody. And we hope to have that position filled hopefully here in the next 60 days or so. And I think that covers the majority of my updates for this evening. Just again, want to thank Jonathan for being willing to step up and keep the day-to-day moving with our planning folks. Last update I was going to have was just a reminder that our next council meeting on Tuesday, not, it's going to be a Tuesday, excuse me, September 5th because of Labor Day. So that's it for me.
Thanks, sir. Town attorney.
For it, Mayor.
Somewhere on this I wrote down to give the floor to deputy manager Gil. Is that, is it, is that at this time? They don't.
Our current townwide strategic plan ends in 2025. We need to begin to put out a RFP to seek proposals for consultants to help us as we launch into a new planning process, which we are currently working on right now. Tomorrow, you will receive in your email box a survey where we would like your input into developing the scope of the project to ensure that when we bring these folks to the table, that they are attending to the needs of the town of Clayton currently. So we would like your input on that. When we go into our September 5th work session, we'll take the results of that as well as the results from our department directors and use that information to develop the scope for our RFP, which we would like to get out on September 15th. Like to thank Patrick Pierce helped in developing the survey that you'll see. And Darcy Ammon is also working with me on this project. We are delighted it will take us probably a good, you know, 12 to 15 months of planning. So we need to get started on that. I'll entertain any questions other than that. Good to go.
Awesome. Questions or comments? Mr. Thompson.
While you're at the podium, we get a lot of questions from citizens about the, they see the scaffolds and things. Could you just give us an update on the current, you know, building upkeep things you have going on? Because I think that's of public interest.
Sure, sure. This project should last until October, but what is happening is a process called tuck pointing. We're also having a membrane roof replacement on the Clayton center side. So both those projects are happening simultaneously. Both engineering and property maintenance are collaboratively working on this project together. So in order to preserve the mortar in between our bricks on this historical structure, what you're seeing is the gentlemen are literally taking out the mortar and inserting it with new. We've picked out color that will match to ensure that the building has many, many more years of useful life. So this is a wonderful maintenance opportunity, one that we have needed to get done for quite some time. And we just ask for continued patience as we get that done.
Thank you very much. I think, you know, these buildings mean a lot to the community and, you know, it wasn't, you know, just 30 years ago, we didn't think they'd be standing today. And if we wanted to stand for another 30, 50 years, then, you know, this is necessary work. And appreciate you taking on that project and really pushing it forward and looking after our buildings.
Absolutely. Lots of help from a lot of great experts over here as well. Thank you.
I hope everybody likes the color of the mortar, just saying. All right. Any staff report from town clerk? Thank you. All right, I'll open the floor for informal discussion, public comment. Anyone wish to speak? No one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to the council for comments. Yes.
I would just like to say thank you for town staff and thank you for council for all your hard work. And I just feel like, you know, just getting into the, the kind of the details of what we do daily, it's important for, you know, voters and, you know, developers and stakeholders to make sure, you know, when we're, you know, creating our growth plans, you know, with, when it comes to our UDC, that they are a part of it because it's very important, you know, going forward for communication and transparency so that we can actually have those common goals. So, you know, I definitely would love to see the percentage go up when it comes to just constituents being a part of this because it goes into everything that we do daily and how we approve. Even when we're talking about transportation, it's super important because it just helps us and it gives us the, the support that we need to make the decisions that we do every single day. So I just want to make sure I just make that statement.
All right. Anyone else? All right. If not, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter.
So moved. Second.
All in. On economic development in accordance with NCGS 143-318-11A4.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything else to come before this council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.